Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, November 14th Council Services and Safety Committee. Mary Lou Polly is sitting in from Mariah Bateese. And first up this evening, when last we heard about the teen cafe, it was at a full council meeting and we were about six and a half hours into a very long meeting. So we thought we'd put the teen cafe up first this evening.
All right, well, thanks, and I won't say good morning this time. So I'm very excited to come back.
Can you introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Kaylee Jake and I'm the Director of the Teen Cafe, and I love saying that. So I am very excited to be back to present in front of the committee. Since last we met, we've had our open house and had some more discussions, so I want to share that with you. But before I get started with that, I just wanted to take a minute and explain a little bit about where we are as an organization. And I think that when I presented, I let you know that Friends of Youth is our fiscal sponsor, but I wanted to explain that a little bit, just in case that wasn't something that you're familiar with. So being under their umbrella, they treat us much like they would one of their programs. But what it allows us to do is it allows us to raise money under their 501(c)(3) status, and it also gives us, it allows us to lie under their insurance, so that when we open, we'll be ready for that. And I also wanted to let you know that the partnership that I'm hoping that we embark on together is really all that we're asking of the city at this time. So I know that you're in budgeting processes, and I just wanted you to know that that is the extent of our request for the first year, for sure. But we really appreciate just this opportunity, so thank you for that. Okay, so we had an open house at the Trails House at the beginning of October. Our committee had walked flyers around the neighborhood, and then the city helped get the word out to the community. And it was really a wonderful opportunity. The Trails House was packed, so that was a good turnout. I was very excited about that. And I think the best news is that, you know, it was pretty unanimous, that people really see the need for this, for our teens, a place for them to go. And it gave, but it did give them an opportunity to discuss some of the current concerns that they had. And a few of the main concerns are traffic, and the size of the space, the noise potential, and just the investment that we were, that we would need to make in the house to get it up to code, to make it ADA compliant, and to make it usable space for the cafe. And I think, you know, some of those concerns, you know, traffic-wise, I think that it's not something that, I don't think there would be much of an impact, as far as I can see, in that neighborhood, just because we'll be walkable distance from two high schools, a bus route for the other two. I think by the time when you see that kind of bottleneck at 2:00 when the high school gets out, if you're thinking of students from the other ends of the district coming in, you know, they'll kind of be hitting that at the tail end, so. But we've definitely had some thoughts around parking and how we can mitigate that and make sure that they're not parking in the neighborhood. That was another concern. But I did want to share with you that parents and students showed up as well. They're very excited to have something, a service of this kind in the community. And even, you know, some of the folks that had quite a few reservations in the beginning, by the end, you know, I received a lovely email from a woman who was very concerned in the beginning, and the open house kind of relieved some of that fear for her, so that was a good email to get, so. All right. Jeff, you want to?
Oh, sure. Transition. Kaylee, yeah, no, you stay right here, you bet. Hi, switching gears, Jeff Watling, Director of Parks and Recreation with the City of Issaquah. Yeah, as Kaylee said, the public feedback, like, really landed on two key elements. One, a lot of support for the program and the model, and some questions around the site, the location, and some of the parameters of that building. I had a chance after that meeting to follow up with administration, spend some time and follow up with the teen cafe team. And given that feedback, we think it's a good opportunity to explore some options within that area, recognizing the value of that area. I'm going to pull up a map here as I'm chatting and teeing this up. And when I say that location, really looking at that space in and around the community center. There are some other city-owned properties that hold some of those same pluses for this location, and that its proximity to the two high schools, Gibson Act and Issaquah High, programmatic connection to the community center, the Rainier Trail, and bus line, et cetera. And in sort of taking a step back and exploring some other city-owned properties, we thought there'd be some real value in, I think, in a lot of ways, responding to some of the feedback that was heard from the neighborhood and the neighbors. So we've identified four options that we wanted to take an initial look at, and I thought tonight I could really quickly go over those options, lay out for you some of the pros and cons that we've initially been looking at and evaluating, what we'd like to do. And our intent would be to go out, back out to the neighborhood, and have another public meeting, and get some feedback from the neighborhood and from the residents to hear their thoughts on these four options as well. And then, I think, feel like we really have a good footing as a city in moving forward and trying to figure out what would be an optimum location for this program. So if you bear with, I'll go through these four sites real quick. The first site, number one, is the proposed location. This is the 185 Bush Street building. Again, identified as the initial location. Given its proximity, like we said, to the trail and the community center and the schools, certainly some upside there. Recognizing, though, there's some very limited square footage within that space. It is currently residential and has adjacencies to residential property, so some things to be aware of there. As it's currently a residential building, there is some code compliance and some work that would need to be done to get it up to a public or commercial code. The second site that we took a look at and would consider would be what's known as the Trails House. This is the 110 Bush Street building, city-owned, like all the other four. This one currently is, does have public use, so it's code compliant to public use in a public building. It currently hosts a lot of community meetings, a number of city meetings that would need to be relocated. Again, its adjacencies to more public uses as opposed to residential presents a bit of a positive there. I think some of the trade-offs would be its first floor is rather limited in square footage, so programmatically it could be some limitations there. Also, just, I think the historical use and the connection that that space has to trails and to planning might be something that we want to be aware of and insensitive to if we were to consider that as the preferred site. The third option is sort of the southern half of what we in the Parks Department know as the 235 Building. The address is 235 First Avenue. Again, city-owned. This currently, again, is up to public use. We have some of our recreation staff in there, our park planning staff. We utilize it for some storage space and other uses. As we've become, and as you're aware through the budget process, we're looking at some of our restructuring within the Recreation Division. One of the things we're looking at is how to position those teams, all of our Recreation Teams, within the community center to get some synergy there. So we see there being an opportunity to consider this building for a different public use, a more of a programmatic public use. This site has some really good adjacencies to the pool, to the community center, does not have residential around it, so it's a little more buffered from residential areas. The space itself, the square footage, has a lot of flexibility. If you're familiar with it, it's really just sort of an open bunker area that, again, from a programming standpoint, offers some real flexibilities.
What's the square footage?
I don't have exact square footage. What we're looking at, at least in initial concept, is about half of it. So it'd be more square footage than either of the two houses, but I could get that.
Half of it would be more than the other two?
Correct. Correct. Yep.
Quite a bit bigger.
You can kind of see it in size, but yeah, for the public meeting, we'll have that information.
Jeff, did you say it was open floor plan, basically, inside there?
Correct. Correct. There's some walls that we've put in for office space, but that's all. None of them are load-bearing, so really, really flexible that way. There are, again, the storage space we would need to look at. There'd be some relocating we would need to do, but again, is certainly part of some of the planning we're doing within the department. The fourth option that we would have looked at and would want to think through with the community is utilizing some of the existing space at the community center. This is, there's a youth center up on the second floor. What would it look like programmatically to have the teen cafe utilize that space? Again, test their model, if you will, within an existing community space. It's probably the most ready from a plug-and-play standpoint. It would represent an impact to some of our current programs that we have there. We'd need to relocate those within or reprogram those within the community center. I think what has certainly been shared from the teen group, there is an interest in their space, this space being a little more defined, sort of as theirs, as opposed to in and within a community center, so that would represent a bit of a trade-off there. Again, this is all to highlight some of the initial discussions that we've had. I can say that as we've discussed this with staff, as we've discussed this with some of the teen cafe folks and their interests, it certainly does appear that the 235 Building, this site number three, I think is really most preferred and represents, I think, the more optimal of the options. Would love to get some feedback from you all tonight, or some questions you might have, and like we said, I think, certainly have that second neighborhood meeting, get some feedback from the community as we present these three options. From there, we would be ready to begin to work through the actual agreement, but we thought this was a great opportunity, again, given the feedback we heard from that first public meeting, to just take a look at some of the other options, city-owned options we have right around that immediate area. So with that, any questions, feedback, comments?
Comments? Looking at this for a while, and for me, I think three is probably the best of the sites that, you know, as we look around, I mean, the Trail House has definitely got a lot of use already, and I would hate to displace all of those organizations that are working there. And I don't think it's got the proper square footage and not the proper arrangement of the square footage for the needs. I would prefer not to go into the community center. There's already a lot of activity there, and I really think that this group of youth would benefit from having a very separate location without anything else around them, so that it's their space and they can do, basically, not anything they want to do, but, you know. So it would be their space to use.
Thank you. I agree.
Oh, thanks. I haven't seen this, had as many touches on this, because I normally don't sit on this committee, but I'm happy to see that you're evaluating multiple facilities. I think that is great. Just listening to you talk, both of you talk, actually, what jumped out at me is that it seems that you have criteria that you're using, which I would love to see in a table, where you have the four sites and you rank them, and it seemed, Jeff, just some of the criteria that you were using was size, location, whether or not it required renovation, whether or not it was next to neighbors, whether or not dislocated or displaced programs. And then Kaylee, I heard you, I think, talking a little bit about what the actual teens would want, and I think actually having criteria come from the teens as well, and having them rank these four facilities on that as well, would be really helpful for council to see in a table altogether. That would be great. Yeah, but this looks awesome.
And I'll ask, you have a teen advisory committee, right?
We do.
That you've constituted a while ago.
Right.
Have they been part of this process, and have they had feedback on these locations?
Yes, in fact, one of them was able to come with us when we took a peek at the 235 Building. So I haven't, I never let them into the house, because there's a renter there, and just to respect him, but they were very excited to see it, and yeah. So this would be amazing space. They are over the moon, and getting that table and their ranking would be something that we could do fairly quickly for you.
This is my dad, Kaylee, too, making sure, I think that what, Jeff comes from a facilities place, which is awesome, and that's where most of his criteria was, but there's more of a character and feel that I think the teens would rather work, have some criteria they establish with you, and then also rank it just on that. And also, they can rank it on any piece, but I really feel like they could have a piece of the rating system that they own themselves, too.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. And we've put out a couple of surveys last year to the district, asking, you know, what they're looking for, what they want to do with this space, and those kinds of things, so we can share some of that with you as well. Okay.
So I took a look on Google Earth, and it looks like the building in total is someplace between 2,400 and 3,000 square feet, so half of it would be 1,200 to 1,500 square feet. One of the things I certainly found in visiting the Boiler Room up in Port Townsend is, you know, the size of the space isn't as critical as sort of the flexibility. Boiler Room is only in a space that's probably 500 square feet, and they just make the most of it, right? It's, because it's theirs, and they can decorate it different ways, at different times of the year, and all that kind of stuff. And so that certainly seems potentially large enough, and it's exciting that the city could, you know, have its, you know, shift what functions are currently there. I'll ask if there's been any conversation with, so across the street is the food bank, right? Is that directly south of there? Any thoughts or concerns or conversations around being close to the food bank and their operations at that time of day versus teens being in this facility?
Yeah, that's a group we would certainly reach out to, or be ahead of the public meeting, to get their feedback, share this with them.
And I've been speaking with them, so they're well aware of this, and I know that they've also been notified of this change in potential sites, so, but that definitely we could have a more specific conversation around that.
Got it. Well, when this comes back to full council, I would definitely love to see some interior pictures to get a sense of how big the space is. And Kaylee, I know you folks have some initial thoughts about cost to do renovation, ballparks, and that kind of stuff. I think when this comes back to the full council, when there's a bill, there'll probably be a budget for 2018, and I would love to see included in that the potential renovation costs, and that could be a line item in your sort of evaluation of these options.
Okay.
Because I think, from conversations you and I have had, the expectation is that three would actually cost less to prepare for this use than one building would, right?
Far less. Absolutely. Yeah, I think that our architect and contractor had walked through a couple times, and were estimating around 80,000 plus permitting, so more like 90.
For the house that's located at Circle 1?
Yes, correct.
Yeah.
So permitting would be far less expensive and much easier. I've been talking with Christopher Wright on those, that process. And while my architect hadn't had a chance to actually walk through it with us, just in talking about the building with him, we both agreed that it would be, I mean, I'm hoping around 20-ish, so, but he definitely needs to look at the site, and we'll be able to give you some more real numbers. Yeah.
Excellent. All right. Anything else you want to present today?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And Jeff, remind us when we're going to see this, likely to see this back at full council?
Hopefully, the second meeting in December or the first one in January.
I'm sorry, I'm having a little bit of a hard time here, if you can.
So we are planning, hoping to host the public meeting the first week in December. I'd anticipate a report back to you, either that second meeting in December or the first meeting in January.
Excellent. All right. Thank you very much. Thanks for the presentation. We're going to move on now to Agenda Bill 7462, Amending School Impact Fees, and this is going to be Director Niven from our Economic and Development Services, and Steve Crawford from the Issaquah School District, that and cleanup.
Thank you. Good evening. So this agenda bill was before you last month, and I was not here for that meeting, but I'm shepherding this this evening. And staff is really here, and I'm not going to leave, but we're here really to answer any questions that the committee may have, but we believe that the school district is ready to answer, I think, the lion's share, if not all of the questions, that I think the council had raised earlier. So I'm going to go sit over there, and I'm going to let Steve come up. Steve Crawford with Issaquah School District is going to, I think, lead you through a Q&amp;A on some of the questions that were raised earlier by the council, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Steve Crawford, Director of Capital Projects for the Issaquah School District. So impact fees. King County developed the process and formula by which we and other school districts use to develop a impact fee. And since the inception of collection of impact fees in 1991, it's really been a process that's been a balance between cost and acceptability. Included in the formula is a 50% discount of the calculated fee, and...
And that's per state statute, is that correct?
It's King County. So in reality, builders don't pay the impact fee, it's the homeowners who pay the impact fee, and that raises the cost of housing, impacts the affordability of housing, and increases the value of the existing housing stock, which tends to raise the property tax rate, or not the rate, but the property taxes on existing homeowners. That's part of that balance between cost and acceptability. That question of acceptability is something that we are challenged very regularly. Nearly every year, we spend a pretty significant effort lobbying against the homebuilding industry and Olympia, who is down there lobbying strongly to abolish impact fees. They haven't been able to do that yet. They've been able to be granted deferments, and in some areas, they're using that, in some areas, they're not. And it is something that is a challenge, that impact fees in total for our district since 1991 have totaled a little over $49 million. In the City of Issaquah, it's a little over $7.7 million. It's a significant amount of money. It's a small percentage of the total cost. The 49 million is under 5%. The Issaquah share is less than 1%, it's about .77. So as a percentage, it's small, but there's still significant amounts of money, and it's a significant amount of money that we would hate to lose. So as we look at what's acceptable, that's something that has an impact on what we submit for a bottom line.
Sorry, 7.7 million is 1% of what?
And since then, we've had about $1 billion in total construction.
Okay, so of the, the money's collected since, during that time, as compared to the money spent on construction, represents 1%?
Yeah.
Okay.
So this year, our fees went up, and we can go through how we calculated that, but a significant increase was requested by the Federal Way School District for their multifamily. Their generation rate was pushing close to 1.5 per unit. Their requested impact fee for multifamily was a little over $20,000. That ignited interest in the homebuilding industry. It ignited interest in King County, who scheduled discussions, and other districts are hopeful that whatever impact may come from those discussions impacts only Federal Way, doesn't impact other districts and/or how impact fees are collected, or the ability to collect impact fees. So that's the balancing act. It's our desire to be able to continue to collect impact fees over time, because it is a lot of dollars. The formula that's developed is based on costs. Costs include the cost of land, cost of buildings, and they're broken down into elementary, middle, and high school levels. Temporary facilities, i.e. portables, are included in a cost factor. Then you get to credits, and in the formula, there is a state match credit. In our case, we don't qualify for much in the way of state match, so it's basically zero. Other credits include average assessed value, capital bond interest rate, net present value of average dwelling, years amortized, property tax levy rate, and so you run through all of those, and the cost for the land and the cost for the buildings are multiplied by the student generation rate. Student generation rate, we calculate from our Transportation Department mapping system, which locates every student, and you can go through and pick any multifamily development you want, and know exactly how many students there are in each grade span. So that's how we calculate that, and it's based on a district-wide calculation. Our impact fee is based on a district-wide calculation, not individually for any one particular, excuse me, particular jurisdiction.
So you can't base, for instance, in the Highlands, you can't base the generation rates up there on the higher generation rates that occur in the Highlands compared to the rest of the district?
Well, we have historically desired to have a consistent rate between the different jurisdictions, so that there isn't an incentive for builders to move to build homes in Issaquah or Sumamish, because the rate was a little less, or to build homes in the Highlands versus the Issaquah core area, or vice versa, because the rates were a little different in one place or the other.
I guess where I'm going with that is I want to make sure people understand, it's not sort of a one-to-one recoupment based on the exact number of students that are expected out of a given dwelling. It's really a broad number. That's sort of a generalized, it's a generalized number having to do with the kinds of numbers of students that are going to show up, but it's not like, you know, we know that this apartment complex is going to generate 127 students.
Correct.
And if we do in fact know that that apartment is going to generate 127 students.
Yeah, we might anticipate that, but it's generalized, because different developments have the different numbers of bedrooms, and it's generalized, because students' attendance boundaries are larger than any one particular area development, and students attend different schools at different grade spans.
Sure. The reason I mention that is because, as I've said a number of times in the past, one of the challenges, you know, whatever people's perceptions are of, you know, how much we've built, how much you guys have built schools in response to development in the city, we've had this ongoing issue where people love to be in the Issaquah School District, and they particularly seem to love to be on the Highlands and live there and send their kids to school, so we have much higher generation numbers there than are even in the rest of the district, much less compared to other districts, right?
Yeah, it's, it does vary, yes. And we've seen different communities in the past that have had high generation rates over time, age out, and then those generation rates change.
I did a, I had a quick read of some of the stuff today, so I'm a little bit underprepared, but either under the RCW or under King County, it says that school districts that cover multiple jurisdictions, such as several cities, can actually, per city, charge a different rate. So you have the capacity to do it, but you've made the choice not to. So you have the capacity to do it, but you've made the choice not to.
That is correct.
Okay.
Sorry. Did you have more of your point?
I think that's, for the most part. Back in the early 90s, 1991, when impact fees were being discussed as a part of the Gross Management Act, school districts lobbied for school concurrency, and cities and counties lobbied harder to not have school concurrency. And we've always kind of felt that, given that general direction, that our fees should be consistent with the various different jurisdictions in the city, so that we're not directing growth to one place or another. We have had jurisdictions who have elected to reduce the amount of fee that we requested. This is the first time there's been a consideration of increasing the amount.
So why, forgive me, why does this matter? I mean, you said it's a lot of money, and $7.7 million is indeed, for most people, a lot of money, except as you said, you've spent about $1 billion building schools in that same amount of time. And $7.7 million is not very much compared to the billion dollars you spent, right? So the taxpayers of the school district have, you know, instead of paying a billion, they've spent $993 million, right? The general taxpayers. So why is this...
Well, the taxpayers have spent less $49 million.
I'm sorry?
The taxpayers of the district.
7.7 was for the city of Issaquah. Okay. But for the district as a whole, you know? So why, so why is this a big deal? Why is it important for the school district?
Well, $49 million is still a lot of money. That builds more than an elementary school. So to lose the ability to collect impact fees and have to ask for more of our taxpayers in bonds and/or levies is not anything that, that we want to give up and have to ask for more.
I just, I ask because I want to be careful, because, you know, people in the community may feel like somehow they're going to get stuck, you know? If somehow we don't increase these fees, that they're going to get stuck with the bill. But it's really, we're talking about, you know, over time, we're talking about 1% of what their school bond would be otherwise, right?
Yes. And we've seen this year what happened when Federal Way asked for $20,000. You know, it just sort of blows up the whole thing, and the whole discussion starts anew as to, well, whether should, whether there should even be the ability to collect impact Hopefully...
You wind up sticking it all to the, the full 1%.
Yep. Yeah.
Larger taxpayers.
We've been the highest district in King County in the past. Currently, we're three on the multifamily rate, or on the single family, and number two, I believe, on the multifamily rate. Maybe it's three. So we're not average. We're not below average. We're still in the upper tier of request.
You're saying that the, the tax rate for bonds, for education, for the, the tax rate that homeowners are carrying currently were third in the...
The requested impact fee amount for both multifamily and single family.
For the impact fee side of it, we're third.
Yeah. And it varies from district to district, and the generation rates have a big impact on it. Lake Washington has a higher request for single family this year, but their multifamily request is $700 and some compared to our $3,461. There's a difference in the general housing stock between what multifamily units are built there than here. Here, they're more of a townhouse kind of configuration, which tends to attract families more. And there, they're more of multi-story apartment or condos over retail, which tends to be less attractive. So it makes a big difference in generation rate, which translates into a big difference in what the requested impact fee amount is. So any questions? I'd be happy to answer what I can.
So were the questions we sent forwarded to the school district? Because I don't think we've covered them all.
Okay. So what is the maximum amount that can be charged under the RCW? Well, the maximum amount is what you can come up with in the formula. So you look at the cost of land. In this year's impact request, we included $1 million an acre for land, and an estimate of what the, the land area would be for both, for each of the elementary, middle, or high schools. It looks like some of the properties that we may end up with will cost a little more than that. Some of the properties will end up costing less than that. So it seems like a pretty reasonable place to begin, and that can be refined in the future as we actually acquire property. The cost of buildings is, is something that we have pretty good historical knowledge of, so, and we're pretty consistent with other adjacent districts. Cost of portables, we pretty much know what that is. We have too many of them as it is. And multifamily and single-family generation rates are basically calculated from various different developments and averaged out over the, the district. So the maximum is realistically what the numbers compute, and you get to the bottom, and you have a 50% discount. The 100% calculation this year is 27,966 for a single family and 11,259 for multi. And you discount that 50%. We are at, well, you discount a 50%, you'd be at 14,603 and 57,68 for a multifamily. Our request was for 87,62 and 3,461, which is an additional 20% discount. That's that balancing act. We asked for $14,603 for a single family. I can almost guarantee we're going to be having conversations with King County and the homebuilding industry about the viability of future collections of impact fees.
And what's the basis for the additional 25% reduction?
Just that acceptability level to be able to continue to collect impact fees.
Is acceptability master builders saying you have to take it down another 25% or we'll sue?
No, it's not. It's not anybody saying anything in particular or making any kind of demands. It's, it's based on the fact that the request this year is a pretty significant increase in percentage over last year, and that the multifamily increase this year is pretty close to 45% higher than last year.
Would it be fair to say it's just a gut-level feel then about what acceptability is, that there isn't a calculation involved?
There is no calculation involved. It's a gut-level feel between what's acceptable.
What's acceptable and what has the potential to actually pass?
Yeah. As I said before, we've had jurisdictions reduce the amount of the request in the past. We've never had anybody consider increasing the amount of request.
All right. All right. So, and so I'll take a moment to mention for folks in the audience, typically what we do, this is an action item before, so what we're going to do is, we're going to ask any further informational questions we have. We're going to open it up to public comment after we're done with our questions. We'll take public comment, and then we'll discuss what we want to do with this action item.
Question?
Nothing right now.
Sure.
So there was one question of the administration, I believe, and I'll go ahead and speak to it shortly. So the question was, you know, what is the process for the city in determining our impact fees? I think the question was, do we follow the similar kind of, are we unparalleled with the school district or not? The way I would answer that is, it's a little bit complicated. So with this, with the impact fees that you guys have recently revised or updated, which are actually due to be updated again, they're in process right now, and that's parks and traffic, we do a similar thing that the school district does, where there's a capital plan that is what generates that impact fee. So for us, it is a, it's the TIP, and it's the CIP for parks. And what that does is generate a cost per unit. And the only difference that I can see right now, based on this conversation, is we don't have a 70% deduct because of acceptability. I think as a policy statement, you guys say that development pays all of that based on the level of service that we've generated for our city. So, so those impact fees, at least for parks and traffic, are at a one-to-one basis. Where we are with police, fire, and general government, I think you guys know this, there was a memo from Planning Policy Commission, those fees are significantly old and do need to be updated. And I'm not sure whether that's part of the mayor's budget for next year or not.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a big number, because they are so old. It's a six-figure consultant fee. I don't know if it made it in or not, frankly. Sorry.
All right.
Questions for Keith?
Yeah, I have one.
Okay.
I said I was going to ask you a tough question. But I was going to ask you this one anyhow. So IMC 3.63 dot, well, IMC 3.63 is the section of code that pertains to school impact fees. And specifically, Section 3.63.080 is the fee calculation. And it's my read of that document, that council doesn't actually have a lot of latitude in what this fee should be, and that the only latitude is subsection G may impose an applicable fee to cover the reasonable costs of administration of the impact fee. So, so we can recoup our costs for collecting it for the school district.
Right.
But I, I, I read this, and I don't see it as saying that we have much latitude, that this is really a pass-through, that we are collecting for whatever the district chooses to charge.
Was there a question in there that was...
Yes. I'm asking you if that is the administration's read of that section as well.
So I would add two things, because I never just have one answer. So the first piece is, I believe there might have been a city attorney opinion on this, which I believe says, that is indeed his read of this as well. You know, when I read our city code and I read Sumamish's city code, our code is, there's definitely room for interpretation. If you read Sumamish's city code, basically what it says is, they rely on King County's Technical Advisory Committee to approve the school district's capital facility plan, and assuming that happens, whatever fees are with that, they just approve it. So it's a, it's a, it's a check-the-box thing. There's definitely not any room for interpretation on their city code. So ours is more complicated. I think you guys did get an opinion from the city attorney, and I'll leave it at that.
Yeah. I mean, I think that this says that we have a fiduciary responsibility to make sure that overall, the district has a plan to pay for the, the growth that's occurring. But it doesn't say that, it doesn't, it says we just basically have to review their overall capital plan and, and make sure they have a plan.
Right.
And then we put our, our thumb to it. So, other questions? I do?
Thanks. So Keith, do we do any discounting of our fees, and do we include land costs in any of our fees? That's a couple of things I heard today about school impact fees.
So land costs are part of our park impact fees. For the traffic projects, those include land costs as well. So land is part of it. We do not, so, okay. So our impact fees are not discounted. But impact fees, for example, for affordable housing projects, they get a waiver of impact fees based on other ordinances that you guys have passed. So they are, it's a, it's seen as a public benefit, and therefore gets a waiver based on the community benefit that comes with that type of a project.
Actually, Steve, I'll ask you a question about that. When we had our discussion the other day on multifamily tax exemptions, one of the things we were told is that school districts can opt to recoup those fees in their impact fees, those that are not, not collected. Does our school district do that?
Opt to not collect on multifamily?
So I think, I think, I think what we heard, and I was in the back row, so maybe I didn't hear it all, but I think what I heard was that the school district can compensate. If you know, let's assume that the next 1,000 housing units in a community, 10% are going to be affordable, because the city has inclusionary zoning requirements, which requires that. So you know that you're going to get 100 housing units and no impact fees associated with those. So is there a compensation or an adjustment to the rest of the fees that you're proposing based on the amount of affordable housing that a particular city may be striving for? Was that...
That's a factor that would be a part of the discretionary discounting, and/or what that level would be.
And this is, and I think the, the reason why this is becoming more important is because the city is part of the Housing Strategy Work Plan, and the housing strategies that we're moving forward are definitely focusing on getting more affordable housing units within our community. So whereas this may not have been a big issue for the district in the past, it may definitely be something that you might want to be considering as we move forward.
And has that been taken into consideration, the number of potential homes that will not be having, being required for these impact fees?
An approximate amount of anticipated percentage, yes. Again, it's kind of hard to know in the development process, how many are going to come, when, and in total, you anticipate there's going to be a number, but it's going to occur over a period of time.
With the interlocal agreement between the Issaquah School District and the city, is there any language in there that talks about impact fees? Or is it just our current IMC code that talks about collection of impact fees for schools?
Stu, in this from memory, and I can definitely read it before it comes back to council, or whether it's coming back to this committee, I can provide you with that answer. I mean, I believe what it says is, we will collect impact fees on behalf of the school district and, you know, forward that revenue to the district for their use. I don't know that it talks about any discretion we have in that. But I would want to double-check that before you took that to the bank.
Yeah, I read it, and I thought it just basically referenced 3.63.
Just mentioned the number?
Well, it referenced the IMC. The questions?
Nope.
All right. Well, then, what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask if anybody in the public here this evening would like to speak to us on this issue, sir, if you'd come to the microphone. And if you'd like to identify yourself, you may. And I'm going to give you three minutes.
Thank you. I'll be brief. My name's Brian Weinstein. My address is on file. I'm here to speak about school impact fees and the issue of how the Issaquah School District is providing a discount to developers of single and multifamily housing developments. I'm not talking about the discount that is allowed by state law, but the larger discretionary discount. The key problem that I see is not the calculation of the school impact fee, but the overly generous discount, given for fear of being sued, as was mentioned in the previous Council Services Committee in October. Since then, I've looked, and I couldn't find the key word, "school impact fee lawsuit" in the state of Washington anywhere on the internet. So I'm not sure what this is related to. What I did find was RCW 82.02.060. I was surprised to see that there is no provision for a discount when it comes to school impact fees. Let me say that another way. There is no legal provision for a discount to be given on a school impact fee. Since there's an interlocal agreement between the Issaquah School District and the city of Issaquah, concerns me that if RCWs have been violated by the offering of this discount, that the city of Issaquah is on the hook in some way for a violation of state law. I'd consult your attorney. But the real issue is the result of offering such a generous discount, and whether it's a policy decision of the Issaquah School District or the city of Issaquah to offer such discounts to developers under the threat of lawsuit or otherwise. School impact fees are allowed to be collected for the obvious impacts development makes to the community, and for the levels of service that need to be provided for the growth which those impacts bring. To discount the fees to developers suggests that the Issaquah School District has enough money to abrogate any impacts that, impacts that growth brings. But we know this is not the case, because of the number and volume of bonds that our community has had to deal with, and will be dealing with in the next years as well. I'm really worried that passing along a discount represents some kind of special deal to all developers at a huge cost to taxpayers, and that's even worse. To resolve this issue, follow the law. Charge the full amount. If you have a problem doing that, come up with a discounted amount at the city of Issaquah policy level that can be traced back to ordinance and process that clearly delineates why a discount is being provided, and for what purposes the discount is used. Specifically, there is a section for affordable housing. Specifically, there is a section for affordable housing. After all, this is potential public money that is being left on the table. The public deserves to know why and what that money should have or could have been used for. Saying you're passing along a discount to developers represents a gift to developers of public money. And if you think there'd be discussion about this, wait till that gets out. Again, the solution, follow the law, charge the full amount. That's really what we, as taxpayers, would expect both the school district and the city council to do anyway. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else who wishes to speak to this?
It might be possible the school, the city can't raise it up, but the school district is, needs to start listening to taxpayers and raise that fee. So whether the city is able to force that is maybe a question, but at least should be indicating to the school district their concern. And at some point, the, I will say arrogance of the school district, which I feel is of a late, will end up having a problem with bonds and levies, and we don't need that problem. There's a taxpayer rebellion, certainly is potential out there, and this kind of thing is not where we need to go in getting people more angry about their feeling they're not being taxed fairly. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else in the public wishing to speak? Excuse me? All right, let's discuss this. So the recommendation that we have in front of us from the administration, the language is pretty straightforward. I apologize, I thought I had it up, and now it's gone. But it is basically to pass through the recommendation as it has come from the district, as Director Crawford has indicated. Thoughts?
Thoughts? Couple of thoughts. I agree with you, Tola, that when you look at our code, it seems pretty clear that what we are supposed to do is collect and pass through. I agree with that. But I have heartburn over what seems to be an unsupported discount that taxpayers in the City of Isaguas pay. Not that we can set it, not that we can necessarily change it, but I have a lot of heartburn over it. What's not clear to me yet is, I've read the lawyer, the letter we got from our lawyer. I read the attachments that we got from Stacy that covered the original ordinance allowing the impact fees to be collected by the state. And I've read the questions from both her and I, and the answers that Steve gave tonight. And I still feel like I don't understand this very much. I'm not saying I don't want to move it forward with the administration's recommendation, but as far as our responsibility and role, I don't think I can hang my hat like you did on the one thing and say that it is just pass-through. I feel like if it's if, it is not legal to discount. There was no discussion of discounts in the state authorization of allowing for collection. What it said was that school districts can choose the funding sources. So in this case, it's 97% taxpayer, 3% developer. It doesn't say that they could take the costs, the costs that the King County calculation fee and half it again. That's not in there anywhere. And so if discounting is not allowed, then I'm not so sure that it's appropriate. I'd like to hear from our lawyer if it's appropriate for us to pass it through. So if our lawyer says, "This is the limits of your responsibility, and this thing that you're being asked to pass through has been legally defined, calculated, whatever you want," then I'm fine with it. But I feel like I'd like to get those two pieces of information when it goes to council.
So what do you propose we do this evening?
I'm fine with it to go forward with the administration's recommendation. I want to see those two other pieces of information in the package.
The legality of not collecting the full 50%, and what was the other piece?
Our role, which you've read from one piece, which was our code, but then there's an inter-local agreement that we haven't seen, that Keith was doing from memory. There's the RCW that specifically links district and city in all of its language. And then there's King County's, which has us linked as well. So I'm still not clear that really, truly, we are just a pass-through. And I'd like to hear that from the lawyer, that that's what we are.
So, oh, I'm sorry, Eileen.
Oh, I was just gonna say, are you wanting to move it forward, then?
Yes.
Okay.
So, two thoughts, if I may. I know I'm a guest. One is, so the proposed increase, so whether you think the increase is enough or not, whether you agree with the double discount or not. You know, those are clearly conversations, I think, that the council probably want to have with the school board, to philosophically talk about those from a policy standpoint and see if there might be a different endpoint. You know, what I look at is, what's on the table right now is a proposal for a 45% increase on multifamily and a 10% increase on single family. And whether you agree with those numbers or not, they're better than what we have on the books now. And it seems like, because we do have development that's going through permitting, that's getting their, you know, building permits, and I don't know what that number is, and I know you're gonna want to know that.
That was one of my questions that did not get answered, actually.
Okay, I will put that on my list, too, to shag. But I think that, you know, the question is, is what might we lose if this stays at the current, you know, 2017 numbers for a while longer, you know? And I think we can get you that number. But it seems like, you know, these are going at least in the right direction, maybe not far enough, but that might be another conversation that you all might have. And, you know, maybe part of, you know, what we need to do is think about maybe revisiting this mid-year in 2018, if, and there may be another chance to have another bump.
Eileen?
Hi, I'm ready to move it forward, but I still have a lot of questions. But I think perhaps that we do need to move it forward so that we can get the rest of the city council in this discussion. And, excuse me. Just making sure that the code is clear, that the discounts that we've been talking about here are legal and we can choose the funding sources. So I would recommend moving forward this evening, but I think we need to have some more discussion and bringing in the entire council for that discussion.
All right. So my thinking is, so Mary Lou had two yes-no questions, right? One yes-no question is, can we put our thumbprint on what we do here, right? The second question is, is it legal to do the double discount, right? So if the answer to, can we put our thumbprint on it, is no, then there's not much for us to talk about. At that point, it's just, you know, the district is an entity, the way we are, that chooses to generate revenues in various ways, right? They could build schools out of operational funds if they wanted to. It'd be a bad idea. They would be cutting teachers, which nobody likes, but, you know, and they're choosing right now, they've got a model that they want to use. And if we don't put our, if we don't get to put our thumbprint on it, then who are we to tell the school district how to do their business? If we do, if we can put our thumbprint on it, then it's a, then it's a potentially different question, right? And so this other question has been asked about the legality of the double discounting. And obviously, if it's not legal to double discount, then the district would probably want to know that. So I think those two questions, I think you're seeing agreement from the three of us, that we want to bring it back with a recommendation to adopt, but with, but needing clarity on those questions before the final vote comes up before the council. And Mr. Crawford would like to, I'm gonna let you make one more comment on this.
As to the question related to double discount, King County Code specifically requires the school district, in calculating the school impact fee, reduce the calculated fee by 50%. See King County Code 21A-43-030.
Right, that's the first discount, right? Nobody's, nobody's arguing that that first discount isn't appropriate. The question is, a further discount, right? So the administration's gonna come back with those, and hopefully that'll allow for a clear conversation when this comes back before a full council. Any closing comments before we move on?
Nope.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Crawford, for joining us this evening.
On consent?
Funny. That would be no, that would be regular business, but your enthusiasm is noted. Agenda Bill 7389, 2018 Arts Grant Recommendations. Amy Duke, our arts coordinator, and Trish Blor, our arts commission chair. I hope I pronounced that right.
Sorry, it's just me, so. Good evening. I am here to bring forth the recommendations from the arts commission for the 2018 arts grants. This year, we had 32 applicants and requests that totaled over $275,000. And what is being recommended is funding in the amount of just under $174,000. So, looks like that is not getting projected, but hopefully you have it in front of you, the recommendations list.
You do?
Great. So we didn't have any substantial changes to the application this year. We did have one policy change this year, and that was to cap the amount that any one organization could get from the funding to 25% of the total pot of funding. That did only impact Village Theater. We decided to soften the blow of that impact by including the $20,000 for the Neighborhood Arts Grant Program in the total amount of granting. So bringing that calculation up to 125% of $195,000. And then, at the end of granting, arts commissioners voted to round their amount up to $50,000. So that explains that kind of odd number. The other change is that we did not have the Parks and Recreation Department apply for grants this year. There's been a lot of conversation in the past years about that being a bit odd, having one city department requesting funds from another city department. And we actually sat down with the Parks Department to look at that budget and realized that the arts commission was funding more than half of Concerts on the Green, for example, and decided that we would address it more through a partnership inter-departmentally than to have them apply for grants and compete with our community organizations. So that's a bit of a change as well. Other than that, we're really pleased with the applicants that we received. If you have any questions about them specifically, I would be happy to answer. There was one that you might notice is coming in very low, and that's Tasveer. That is the South Asian Film Festival. We did partner with them this year during our International Film Festival and showcased one of their films. They did apply this year, but they did not actually suggest any activities in the City of Isaguas. And they felt like that was an oversight in their application, but arts commissioners struggled with it philosophically. So the, so the amount that is in there is kind of paying a fee to them to showcase one of their films, again, at our film festival next year, and then hopefully we can make that partnership more robust, so.
I'm sorry, so, so right now, the amount that's requested for them?
Oh.
$7,500.
They requested $7,500, and we're just recommending $765. And that would be like a fee to show a film. It's actually about twice what it would cost for us to show one.
Why am I not, I'm not seeing that. My Exhibit A just says NA for 27, oh, 2017.
That's the 2017 funding, yeah. Yeah.
Here's the, I'm seeing their request for $7,500, I'm not seeing $700.
Are you missing the column with the recommendations?
Oh, I'm on the wrong page. That would be why. Yep, all better. Never mind.
I'm happy to answer any questions, though, that you might have about any of the grants or philosophy behind their decisions, or...
The bill says the budget is 175. Is that, where does that leave the funding mechanism? Is that basically the entirety of the money that would be, would have been available this year? Was there, was there a set aside?
Right, so we have one line item that encompasses all of our granting and all of our programming that the arts commission puts on, which we don't put on a lot, but we do the film festival and chalk art and some smaller programming. So that total for that line item is $225,000. And then every year before granting starts, the arts commission decides how much they want to give in funding. And this year, we wanted to set aside $20,000 to do a pilot neighborhood arts program for 2018. So that is why the amount is $175,000 for this sort of general arts granting pool.
Got it. Questions?
Yeah, I know, it's always, yep, always makes me feel really good to see this list. This is a nice, broad range of artistic.
And we, a couple of years ago, we added to the application to ask groups to respond to our strategic directions, and so many of them respond so nicely to our creating access to the arts for the community. And just, the majority of the groups on this list are providing programs completely for free to our community, so.
And I find it interesting, you've got, under schools, you have some schools listed that I think have catchments entirely outside the city. So is it, you looked, you sort of accepted district-wide applications?
We have, sort of like the Parks Department, we do consider our service boundary to be the school district as well. And also, that helps us achieve some of our interest in reaching out to a more diverse audience. We know the school district is very diverse, so.
All right. All right, well, it sounds like there aren't any questions. So the recommendation here is to come back, return to the council on December 4th. I can, I see no reason why it wouldn't be consent.
Unless you will.
All right.
Thank you.
Our council meetings lately have been long, unless, yes, unless the administration somehow wanted to come back. All right, we are gonna move on to MFT, a continuation of the conversation that we had 24 hours ago with Jen Davis Hayes, Economic Development Manager.
Okay, good evening. Yes, we are here tonight again. Let me see, did we get the right one up, services? And thanks again for having us back here for a more in-depth conversation. Again, Arthur Sullivan from Arch is here, as well as Hal Fairs from Spectrum Development Solutions. So what we heard last night was...
Just like Superman, he just shows up in the nick of time.
I know, man.
Someone, somewhere, needs affordable housing, and he flies here.
Exactly, he senses it.
And here he is.
That's a good, good skill to have. So we noted three committee discussion items talked about last night. So we're gonna talk about the proposed range of unit sizes, the affordability of life of use versus 50 years, and then some ordinance cleanup items. Are there other items that have kind of risen to the top since last night? Okay, so those are the others, and of course, as we continue the conversation, we will, we can discuss things. So I do have, in your package, you have the full presentation that was provided from last night. We had that at the end of these slides, so if we want to refer to any of those slides, we can easily do that. So these are new, these are ones you do not have, because we made them about four hours ago. So one of the questions was looking at the proposed range of unit sizes. And I want to first note the note that this is the proposed, so there are some design issues as far as, you know, how things are gonna work on the floor plate, how many sizes, or how many units can actually fit on a floor plate, et cetera. So, you know, these may be off by one or two, or may change in the real project when it moves forward. But generally, this is what has been presented in the proposal. And so in the second column has, and the lower part, the percentage, actually talks about the percentage of affordable of all of that studio, or all of the one bedrooms. So we give you an idea of the unit size, where they're gonna be located, King County Housing Authority Building or Spectrum's building, and then the income affordability level. And that should say AMI behind it, sorry. So that's a range of between 40, 60, and 80% AMI. Any questions about this chart?
So, three-bedroom and two baths.
Yes.
I'm seeing 40, 60, and 80?
Yes, yes.
Total units?
Yes, okay.
Is 50?
There's 53 bedroom, two bath in the, in the project.
Right.
24 of them are gonna be affordable at 40%, located in King County Housing Authority. Six are gonna be affordable at 60% in King County, and two will be in the Spectrum Building at 80%. And two will be in the Spectrum Building at 80%.
Got it.
Yeah.
So it looks like the Spectrum Building is going to be all 80%.
So they're the 80% with the MFT as well as market rate.
Got it. Okay.
Yes.
And so the two bedrooms, 46% are affordable at mostly 60% with some 80%. The one bedrooms is 54%.
Right.
Again, the vast majority, 60%, not 80%. And about half and half on the studios at 60 and 80.
Yep.
All right. Per the attachment that we had yesterday as to what defined a three-bedroom at 40% of a three-bedroom at 60% and a three-bedroom at 80%. All right. This is exactly what I wanted to see.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Yeah. So you'll notice that obviously, you know, the percentage is skewed towards the larger units for the three-bedroom. So that's, again, nice. I think it reflects our community and so should do well. We weren't 100% sure that that other chart was going to meet what you were asking, so again, this just actually splits it out. Same information, just presented in a different way. So, okay.
Appreciate that.
Yep. Anytime. And again, we can share these electronically. So I am going to have Arthur come up and talk about the affordability term, because that was one of the questions that was asked last night about life of project versus 50 years. And there has been a lot of discussion about it in hallways and on phone calls, and so I'll let him come up and explain a little bit more about why we came to the decision to do life of project.
So, Arthur Sullivan, Program Manager of Arch. So the choices that might typically be on the table is to do it for some specified time period or to do it for the life of the project. And in the other communities we've been working with, and in the case of yours, you have a land use requirement. And your land use requirement is for the life of the project, which sort of makes sense because it's associated with a building permit. And so as long as that building is there, if it's there for 30 years or 50 years or 60 years, that building has been permitted under provisions. And if you remember how we were explaining last night that the MFT affordability was a build upon from the land use, so where we're using it, especially in a case like yours, the sort of the two tools are together. And in fact, in many... In some of the cities, we will use the same covenant to cover the affordability under the land use provisions and the multifamily tax exemption. So the starting... So when we were looking at it, you could go either with 50 years or life of the use. We lean towards life of the use because it's consistent with the provisions you have currently in your land use provisions. And so we thought, might as well be consistent with that approach so that in the buildings there would be a consistency there. So that's the reason why we put it that way. And especially if you go into the future and you did use it in other parts, you know, in other areas of the city, then it would much more so be relevant that way. So that was the logic.
Bradley?
Thanks. So, Arthur, my understanding in the Issaquah Highlands Development Agreement was that we had 30% of the units would be affordable, but only 13% of them would be affordable to the first owner, and 17% were affordable for 50 years. So have we used different... In development agreements, have we used other parameters besides life of the project?
Right. So that goes back to the King County Master Plan Development Community Days. That process started under a process that started in the early 1990s, even actually the late 1980s by King County, when they did master plan developments. And a very different situation. So when I was referencing, I'm looking at what the cities have been doing since the 90s with the rezones and stuff. So in that development, what happened there was it was your affordability levels that the county had typically done in master plan communities were not at 80% and less. They were at 80, 100, and 120% of median. Now, back in the early 90s, 100 and 120% of median was the market price for condominiums. And so the big debate was, and the provisions we had in place said that the price of the home would be what you paid plus the change in real estate values in the area. So what we had put in place, and this was something that was negotiated by King County, the master developer in Issaquah Highlands, or was it another master plan community? I can't remember which. And actually, I was at that table trying to help get through this conundrum that everybody was stuck with, which is that program was as much about creating a diversity of housing as it was about explicit affordability. In other words, there was an area designated to be single-family, and they were turning it into... They wanted different diversity of housing. And so they... The 80 and the 100, 120 was essentially to try to make sure there was more diversity of product. So the builders were often, when they were doing 100 and 120, they were essentially building market rate product. There may be a few bit under. So the agreement that was made was that when a building was being proposed, there would be a market analysis that would compare the value of that unit on the open market to the restricted price that would be required under the provisions of the ordinance. If that price within... Was in, I can't remember if it was 5% or 10% of market value, the logic was, since you allowed appreciation to be equal to changes in market value, you controlled the first price, but you didn't control the resale. If that, as time went on, we were finding as the market progressed, we were finding that products were starting, you know, especially the ownership ones, they were more than 10% below market of the market value. And therefore, those had to have a covenant in place. So that was what distinguished why not every unit got a resale covenant, especially at the 100 and 120. What you got built there were condominiums, which, instead of single-family, and so that provision was as much to ooch the market to some product that they weren't building back in the late 80s, early 90s.
So that makes sense. I guess I have a couple of questions. One is, then, we should stop counting it on our affordable... Because we're now, when we do our statistics, we say that we have 30% affordable up in the Highlands, but once that 17% leaves the market, and with the current market, we actually don't have that... Or 13%. We actually don't have that at all. So now we're back down to the 17%. And actually, your explanation of it was done to get housing diversity totally makes sense. So in the Polygon deal that we just did up in the Highlands, did we do life of the project, or did we do 50 years?
I'd have to go read the covenant to see which way we went. So the... I can't remember.
So instead of...
I mean, we're working on it right now.
Instead of trying to get you to figure out that tonight, what would be helpful is, I know what the code says.
Right.
But we also already have a current inventory in town. And I'd like to know if that current inventory, say, I know Imagine Housing has places, Y has the places, have we used this life of the project with our current inventory? And if so, how much of our current inventory is life of the project, or how much is 50 years?
So we've worked with nonprofits. They're using public funding, and in those cases, it's almost 50 years.
Okay.
And so with land use, we wanted... Again, land use is a very different tool. And so the land use tool, your city and the newer... And the areas now and other cities on the east side, because again, one of the other things we're trying to do amongst our cities is philosophically for builders to understand how the provisions work to have as much consistency between cities as possible. So that's another potential. But yeah.
That would help me if I could see our existing inventory and where it is on there. I mean, if the majority of our housing right now is 50 years, and we want to start something new, which is do life of the project, I think that's a policy question for the council to talk about.
And that's fine, but I would say distinguish projects that get affordability through funding versus land use. But yes, we can get that information.
Great. Thanks.
All right. Eileen? All right.
What's the next slide?
The ordinance cleanup.
Okay. So there are several things, you know, because we're working fast here and in conversations with Hal and Spectrum Development, that we want to go in and double-check the language on. And I think we've listed all the things. We still might be missing something, so I won't promise this is the full list. But one is, there's some references to potential penalties based on law, and we want to make sure it's real clear which laws we're referring to. And what we plan on referring to is this ordinance and the state RCW that enables property tax exemption. So that's one of the cleanups. There might be some other places like that. The second item, we don't know if it's most appropriate to put in the ordinance or if it's more appropriate to put in the covenant that is done. And that's basically, I think, the issue of making it clear that if we find out that they're supposed to have 20 affordable or 21 affordable units, and we find out one or two of them is in noncompliance, we don't just cut them off at the legs and say, no more, you're in noncompliance. So we give them an ability to cure a situation. Now, the other which we've always covered in the covenant, you know, one scenario could be if they're not renting at the right level. Another is if someone's incomes goes up. And so what do you do when someone's income goes up? And this is something we've done pretty consistently over the year in both funded as well as land use, every kind of project. And that's not covered in the ordinance, but it is in the standard covenants that we've used, which is, once someone moves in, their income is allowed to go above the threshold for moving in. That way, like if your threshold is 80% of median, if your income goes to 81% of median, you don't get booted out. There's a cushion period that's been built in. We've used that for decades. So that provision would be there. If someone's income did go way above that, this is a mixed-income project. You know, we give choices to the consumer. The consumer can either start paying market rent in that unit, and they don't want to leave that unit. They love that unit, and so they have like a three-month grace period, and then they have to start paying market rent. And the next comparable unit that opens up becomes an affordable unit. So it allows a way for the resident to stay in, or if they want to move to another unit or move, they have that choice. But there are provisions to allow. So we want to look at that to see if any of those kind of things need some, at least general reference, so that it's clear for builders that it's... You know, that there's a process for allowing them to try to make sure that they can cure any of the units not being in compliance. One other thing that we realize is that the standard language that we typically use is that the unit mix, as you saw in the slide above, is... Let me go back up to this slide if I can get there. Is that you can see in the Spectrum project, they are doing essentially 10% of each unit size as affordable units. So that works out fine for theirs, but we're looking at this as a project in total. And so when... That's this chart. And it isn't exactly proportionate because the Housing Authority is their project on top. So what we're probably going to... What I've thought about doing is in... For this neighborhood, you know, where we're doing it for this section, we would say the unit mix would be roughly comparable, and for this project, that's interpreted to be generally consistent with what you received in the RFP or in their response. So that it's clear in the ordinance that the mix that is proposed here, and it might skew a little bit, but that generally, this is the mix that we're going to be looking for for affordability and overall unit mix with a little flexibility as they do final design.
Go to the second chart.
Sure.
So where you split it out for the lower table, Spectrum Affordable, if it's treated as its own building, does it meet the percentages in the ordinance? Or are you saying it doesn't meet the percentage?
No, it does not. And so that's why we're looking at them combined.
That's why you're looking at them combined.
And so once you do it combined, it isn't proportionate when you do all that mess. So we want to be clear upfront that proportionality for this project is defined in their RFP response that they provided.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. What's the last one? And actually, I think the last one might be related to the first one. But there may be some other places where we want to do some more specific state code references. But the last one is the example I gave you of where we do know we want to add references to specific state codes. There may be some other places, as we go through it a little more carefully, we want to do something similar. So those, I think, are the main things that we've identified in conversation so far, I think. Did I miss one?
There's one that the language requires, you know, common treatment for exterior and interior finishes.
Right.
And the Housing Authority doesn't want to put decks on their...
Right.
...for cost and for maintenance.
Right. So essentially, we'll do the same kind of thing, so.
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to ask that you repeat what he said on the microphone.
Yeah, thank you. So one of the questions, just like we have comparability of unit mix, there's a thing about comparability of design features. So we want to be clear that the comparability of design features for the ones in the Spectrum Building are comparable to the rest of its building and not to both buildings together. So we just... Sort of just because we're looking at them separately, kind of designed and managed. So we just want to do that as well.
Bradley?
So is that... I didn't quite hear the whole answer.
Oh, okay.
Was it King County Housing's requirement not to do decks that's coming from there? Like, who is saying that they not doing that?
So that's... I see that the design elements of the two different buildings is something more that will be covered in the development agreement. So I would say any issues you have on design of the two buildings, you know, just like the Plaza, et cetera, you'll deal with in the development agreement. I think what I was hearing from Spectrum in terms of this agreement, just making it clear that the affordable units will be comparable to the building that they're in, to the rest of the units of the building that they're in.
I see.
Okay. All right. So I think, was that covered?
That's it.
Okay.
Other questions? All right. I don't actually have 7488 in the packet. There's...
Right, because it's not an agenda... So this wasn't officially an Agenda Bill referred here?
Oh, right. It's informational.
Informational. So we are... We will be coming back on December 4th for two items. And so that's... One is to do the public hearing for the residential targeted area, which is required, and then have a continued discussion and hopefully adoption of the ordinance. So if there's any information that you'd like to hear, I have Councilmember Polly's the current inventory request, and so we'll have that hopefully prior to that. If there's any other information you'd like us to present or bring up and point out, that would be helpful to know now as well.
Anything else?
Nope. Okay. And we will add those charts as well to the presentation.
Sure. Bradley?
I just wanted to say, Jen and Arthur, it's a very complicated subject, and you did a really good job bringing us along.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
And all right, so it's informational. So we will move on. Jen, you get to stay up there. And this time now, lead us on the Economic Development Annual Report.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, can I make a public comment on the last?
All right. I'll take a public comment. Don't normally do that on informational items, but given your involvement in this, if you want to introduce yourself when you get to the mic, I'd appreciate it.
Jen, could one of the shows the mix of units affordability?
Yes, 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 yes. Okay. In which you want the...
Shows the units at 40%.
So the... This one or the...
The one.
The next one? Okay.
So Hal Fairs from Spectrum Development, and this both addresses the length of affordability and clarification from the King County Housing Authority. I talked to them. And I just wanted the council, the committee, to know that the Housing Authority, the three-bedroom units, the 24 units that they're showing at 40% of very immediate income, those are being achieved with Section 8 certificates, where they're buying that down from 60 to 40. And the length of that affordability right now, they can't commit to longer than 15 years because that's all the longer that they know that those might be available.
That's kind of what they told us on the phone today. We asked that question.
Okay. Well, then, we should get clarification from that because they told me for... They will be affordable at 60%.
We asked the House, and we will go back and ask them. Ask them that question, or what happened about it, by the way, if they would stay at 40.
Okay.
I appreciate your wanting to be clear on this, even as it's something that could cause some fear, uncertainty, and doubt, but I really do appreciate that. It sounds like we'll get a little further clarity by when we get back to full council.
So then the other thing on the length of the affordability, the, the land use is 12 and a half percent is what you're proposing and that's the length. The MFTE is 20%, so that's the portion that goes longer. And both ourselves and the Housing Authority would have to commit to that longer. And we're both okay with the length of the project if that's what you prefer to go with, but there is a consistency that you might want to consider within the city itself if that's, you know, where you're headed. So 50 years is a long term. Nobody really knows what does that mean and what does that mean different compared to the life of the project. So there's not a meaningful impact to us for us to get financing or do anything else with the distinction between those two.
Do you say I'm starting again 12 versus 20? I'm confused.
Your land use code, inclusionary zoning is your proposal. It was 10%. It's been in the motorium for this area. It's now going to 12 and a half percent. So that is the amount of the total units that would be required to be affordable for the length of the project under zoning. The MFTE requires 20% of the units be affordable, so there's a 7 and a half percent more units now that are being tied into that even though they are only benefiting from a 20-year or 12-year tax exemption.
Got it.
But, but the fact that you're able to count those incentive, inclusionary requirements towards your MFTE units, that allows that longer length of affordability to occur.
Got it. Thank you for that clarity. That is much appreciated. All right. Back to Jen Davis-Hayes.
Okay. So, hi, I'm back to talk about our Department's Economic Development Department's annual update. And so thank you for having us here tonight. I want to also recognize, of course, we have our director, Keith Nivener, who will be able to answer any questions specifically, Tim Dutter, who's going to be joining me for this presentation. He's our new Economic Development Manager and Ethan Stiles, who is our Economic Vitality Commission Chair, brand new this year, and he'll be presenting for part of the, the presentation. So it's been a busy year and recognizing that we actually had a, down one staff person for about a third of the year and also the moratorium items and other things. And so we are excited to hear, be talking about the things we actually did accomplish and looking forward to 2017, or 18, 17. So first, we're just going to dive right into the different things that happened this year. One of the things, the focuses that we, we focus on is, what focus we focus on, is workforce development. So we have continued our job fair over at Pickering Barn. We've held that now for four years, I believe. And this is a basic description of the event and we're looking at holding our next one next May. Our, this is an event that our local retailers and businesses wish we did every month. As we might know, every business you go into, every business owner you know is looking for help. We really have done a good job working with our school district and we're trying to expand the types of jobs that are available at the job fair to, to be more available to people who are, who are beyond their entry level kind of careers. And so there is some additional work we'll be doing at that. The resume review and interview prep, we actually have available for free for people to come in and that has been wildly, wildly successful with our volunteers from the Work Source Development, from Chambers and from some other HR departments. And so that's been really fun to kind of see that happen because even though we may know how to do resumes, a lot of times this is the first resume that a student or even a, an older professional has done in a while, so that's helpful. I wanted to point out a great partnership we have with the school district, with the school foundation and the Chamber. So I serve on the Chambers Education Committee and this is one of the projects they do. It's called the Great Careers Conference and it's a way to provide career exploration for now ninth to 12th graders who are not in a four-year path. Doesn't mean they will not go to a four-year college, but that, that's not kind of where they're thinking right now. And so we actually bring in speakers from the industry who have started in that career path with less than a four-year degree. They may have gone on and gotten additional education to advance in the field, but it helps to talk to them about what type of things you should be thinking about in school, what, what type of programs there are in community colleges and beyond. And it also has, we have the community colleges there on campus. We actually, last year for the first year, went to Bellevue College to actually host the event because we outgrew the site here in Issaquah. And it's just an amazing event. And so we actually are going to have a second one this year to kind of better align with when students select their courses because the event was in March and they select courses in February, so it kind of didn't have that immediate effect. And so we're doing one December 14th. And so I will say to yourself and any in the, in the studio audience, if there's anybody interested in becoming a speaker for this, they are still looking for speakers for those sessions. So you can contact the Chamber about that. Any questions about these two programs? Sorry, got you with a mouthful.
Of course, Murphy's Law. So the job fair doesn't just target high school students and graduating students, right? So a couple of questions. Do you do anything to target opportunities for folks where English is not their primary language?
We have not yet. You know, that's one of the things, so you mentioned about, we did start off at this job fair actually targeting the youth from 16 to 24 and we've expanded from there. And we, one of the balancing tricks is that's hard because you, it's different types of jobs again, you know, you have professional level jobs and retail jobs and how do you balance that? So we haven't done for ESOL students or for job seekers, but that's something we can look at.
The other question I have is workforce development council of Seattle, King County. Is that the unions?
No, that's the, what they used to call PIC. So they get the money from the Department of Labor and then they allocate funds to job training programs. Marilina Sessions, who used to be the executive director of the countywide organization, actually lives here in Issaquah, and then we, that's how we got connected to her, to that organization. So it's a countywide organization.
My question is, I know a lot of the construction trades have a hard time finding young people for their journeyman apprentice programs. So is there consideration like to work with, I don't know, Central Labor Council, Central Labor Council of King County or somebody like that in trying to, to bring the trades in?
We could, Lou, we could look at that. Our focus has been for the businesses that are located here, so, but we could look at that because there are definitely businesses that would need this.
Yeah, I mean, construction trades are doing lots of work in East King County.
Yeah. And I am, I'll make sure they're also connected with the Great Careers Conference. I think that's another great connection for, again, for students who aren't thinking four years automatically. So, yeah, thank you. So then talking about how, what we do strategically for targeting economic development efforts. So the Sports Medicine Innovation Partnership Zone is a mouthful, the IPZ. So as you may remember, we were designated in 2015. We have a steering committee that has everyone from the, the school district, the hospital, other healthcare providers, community colleges, the Chamber and on and on. We had some changes in stakeholders in this last year where we had a new CEO change at Swedish. We had actually a doctor we were working with at Swedish changed and some other things. And so I will be, be honest that we haven't done a lot in 2017, but we have some efforts that we're, we're planning to reinvigorate. We actually had in the 2017 state budget allocation for $50,000 to help recruit a sports medicine, regional training or conference, and that made it until the end and then it got, was removed. We understand that's being proposed again for the 2018, so we hope that that remains in the budget and that would be actually something that would help draw more attention to this effort. So we'll have more next time on that. And then just wanted to kind of talk about the strategic efforts we're doing because a lot of times, these are things we do behind the scenes. So in economic development, I joke that we make a lot of work for other people, other departments. So we, we, but we definitely work interdepartmentally on things that, for instance, the Gilman Boulevard design, which you have funded, thank you, and is moving forward, we are integral part of that team to make sure that the business and the property owners' voices are going to be part of that process and also that it works for when, you know, the final product isn't just something that's not, that doesn't only meet one set of needs, but that actually fits well into the central Issaquah plan. We are going to, I'm gonna skip to the, we're gonna actually, time to update our strategic plan because our strategic plan was from 2015, 2018, and so we'll be working with Economic Vitality Commission on that. And so that we don't anticipate a huge effort to redo the strategic plan, but just look at it and see if there's some tweaks and some changes and updates.
Can I ask you a question about that? So in light of the fact that the city itself is doing strategic planning next year, does it make sense to do updates of departmental strategic plans when the city's one isn't done yet?
That's a good question. So we really use our strategic plan as a guide for our work plan. And so I think, again, I don't think it's going to be too drastically different, but we would definitely look at what the timing is for the citywide one and that would influence what we do. So if that timing made sense for us to delay it until the, towards the end of the year, I don't, there's no harm in that.
Good, thanks.
Yeah. And then we mentioned, and you probably know this already, but that we have supported the property search of Issaquah School District immensely. We've actually sat down for them, with them for years, looking at different properties and often looking at the same properties for things. At one time, they looked at the CenturyLink site, you know, and it's like, oh, no. So we, that's a lot of efforts, again, behind the scenes that you don't always see. It may always come as a, hey, look, we did these things, but that's something that, again, as, as interdepartmental work, it makes a lot of sense and in interagency work, we're here to help make happen. I'm gonna let Tim.
Jen, I want to ask a question on the last one, too. So I'm not sure if this is a fit for Economic Development or Economic Development slash Office of Sustainability, but the property search for Issaquah School District makes sense because of the basic service that they provide in the community, something that we have to have. Great schools, good education. What about losing the grocery store in Old Town and now having a food desert in the old part of town? And how does that tie into the work that you do in the community? Because I would think that would somehow rise up the crisis list a little bit and that somehow the city would invest time and effort in making sure that we had a grocery store back in downtown.
So we actually have done a lot of work with the property owners. Immediately when it was closed, we reached out to them. We actually provided some referrals of grocery stores we knew were looking in the area. We, actually, I put a call in last week to another grocer to see if there was interest, even though they are moving forward with a different tenant. We're hoping that maybe there's an opportunity to continue discussions. So we continue, we met with the property owners and the property managers just two weeks ago to talk about our desire to make sure there's a grocery store there. Couple of the feedback that we've gotten from, from, I guess I should say it's not directly from the grocers, but is that the location or the size or the, the traffic patterns? And so they want to be more on Gilman or more in the other area. And so, but that is definitely what we do when we, when Staples, when Staples went out, we worked, you know, with that property owner, when Sports Authority went out. So big spaces, small spaces, we definitely work with the property owners to help them think about what could be next that's actually going to benefit the community.
Yeah, and I, let me, let me get in here a little bit first, though, Keith. You know, our problem with schools is that they're overcrowded, but our kids are getting a good education. The problem with losing a grocery store and talking about citing it in another part of the city is that we have Section 8 housing and people with mobility and disability issues who live here who can't get to Gilman Village and are currently shopping in a gas station. So somehow, that to me is kind of a big city issue, like a big city issue.
So part of the value of what we do is we build relationships. And so, you know, what was passed over fairly quickly is actually very significant. So, you know, that closure was not a planned closure. And so what happened is as soon as it closed, we contacted the property owner, which we had a relationship with. We now know who's going into that space and we know what they're getting in terms of square foot lease rents, right? And so what, that gives us the information that we can then use to say, is there the ability to find a grocer that is willing to pay that or more? Because the property owner, I mean, they've got, I think, pretty simple expectations in terms of, of how they want to lease that space. If we can find a better user to go in there, that's definitely part of what we're trying to do. Now, are we going to be successful? I don't know, but we are making calls and trying to do that. And so that's, I think, part of the value that we have just from having relationships with the property owners in town.
And I, I know you guys put a lot of effort into it, but when I think of staff spending time on what's shown here as strategic efforts and we don't even list up there that we have a food desert, I get a little concerned. I get actually significantly concerned. So, you know, this is how we choose to spend our time and we're working with a school district which has a half a billion dollar bond, but we are missing a grocery store in our oldest part of town. And so somehow that has got to get prioritized in here. It's almost, it's not a medical emergency, but it's almost an emergency for these, for these people that live down here that don't have transportation. I mean, it's, it's super serious.
So, and an idea that might help is if in 2018, we defined core services.
Oh, that's okay.
And took a look at how are we, what are our core services? Grocery being one of them. And understand that we have some regions, as, as Marilynn mentioned, that have folks with mobility issues and transportation issues. And, you know, how are we doing on these, on these, in these areas? And when, where do we have, you know, where do we have limitations? And that would give us an output of where some priorities could be.
Good.
For me, it's schools, probably.
Yeah.
I have a question around the Sports Medicine IPZ.
Sure.
So.
He's looking at me.
How many jobs would you say have been created through the IPZ effort since we formed it?
I don't know that I can answer that off the top of my head, but I will, I can, I do, can do some more research on that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I think that, well, we decided in 2014 or 2015 that sports medicine was going to be the flag that we were going to plant in the ground. And certainly we have a variety of different medical industries in the Issaquah area, but there'll come a point where we'll say, well, is this the, do we want to keep, you know, climbing that mountain or do we want to try a different mountain? You know, do we want to do suborbital space tourism or, you know, just to pick one or whatever?
So there's, there's a timing issue that I think is, is interesting. So obviously, one of the things that's been a setback, and I think we're about to get out of that, is, you know, Swedish's merged with Providence slash St. Joe's slash, slash, slash. So, you know, but right now, they're focused on, they actually have to realize the rest of their hospital beds by 2018 or else give them back to the state. So they're right now super focused on doing TI in the hospital right now to actualize the rest of those.
What's TI? And what do you mean actualize those beds?
Tenant improvement, sorry. So they're changing doctors' offices to more hospital rooms. Sorry, that's the less jargony version. When we get past that, our hope is that Swedish will be ready to say, okay, now we've got all these doctors that are in closets. We need to actually build some medical office buildings to house them. We have likewise a property owner north of Discovery who has commercial space, who's been working on a medical office building of their own. So I think we're getting to a point where we might see some more results of that, but your question is a valid one. You know, how long do we do that? And I think, you know, one of the things, and one of the reasons why we were trying to get a regional show is to put a bigger spotlight on that as being analogous with our community.
Got it. All right. Well, I'll be excited to, to hear about that. I mean, you know, there are industries, one of our challenges is, you know, there are industries that create more, you know, larger volumes of living wage jobs and there are others that, you know, you can, you can have a, you can have a bunch of service people for the cost of, you know, one surgeon, right? So there are trade-offs involved, but if, if you really believe that pipeline is, is looking exciting, then, you know, that, that's a good answer to that question.
Yeah, and I just wanted to mention that we have to be recertified by the state. So we would do an analysis ourself at that time because there's no use, like you said, just continuing.
Sorry, when's that research?
For the, the redesignation as Innovation Partnership Zone. So we would not.
And when is that?
That would be in 2018, I believe, yeah.
There you go.
19, yeah. So, or 19, so it's three years, yeah. So again, we want to make sure that that makes sense. And we were excited about the, the job process because you're right, you can be a surgeon, you can be an entry level physical therapist, we're not entry level, but, you know, trainer. And so there's a wide swath. So I'm gonna real quick hand it over to Tim to talk about the citywide branding and tourism efforts and the brand and image.
Sure. So I've actually got a whole slide on the LTAC and branding and tourism. Yeah, it's coming.
It's coming, okay. Just mention here.
Yeah, we'll just wait for that, actually, yeah.
All right. And so one of the things, as you know, is partnerships are really important in our work, relationships and partnerships. And so this is just a list of some of the things that partnerships we've done within Issaquah and then a regional approach. We have done a lot of work, starting with our partners, I'll start on the regional side, with the Startup 425, which is an organization or actually a group of cities, Bellevue, Kirkland, Redmond, Renton and Issaquah, that are providing business assistance workshops for free to, to startup and small businesses. And so we actually held some classes here across the street at the King County Library and we're planning to do that in future years. We've worked on the Port of Seattle, actually provided the city of Issaquah and other cities in King County a grant, $1 per capita. And so we are using, have used that this year and continue to plan for the next grant cycle to use that to help with our marketing efforts and with some tourism and other website improvements. And we continue to do some things with, again, a regional, with commercial brokers and our Economic Development Council, EDC. And one of the things we just did was actually hosted the 425 Business and 425 Magazine Staff, and you may have seen an article if you get that, that magazine, showing them the highlights about Issaquah. And so we think that, that helped to build, again, that relationship so that they better understand Issaquah. They actually had nine people from their staff, I guess. It was, it was, it was a van full and we, we were all over town. We went, we started at Talis and went down through the Valley Floor, stopped along at a Raleigh property at a business and Costco, up at Sanmar, went through downtown, went through the Highlands and went through downtown and then stopped along Gilman. And so it really, for them, helped them to better understand Issaquah. And they said also it was the, one of their funnest tours, so. On the internal part, as far as, yes.
Jen, King County Dashboard, what's?
Oh, yeah. So. So, that was something that I worked, again, with some of the King County, I'm sorry, the Startup 425 partners, working with the King County, so King County Government Economic Development Director, or Manager, and some cities that were involved, that were looking at creating a dashboard for King County. So this has kind of then led into the Economic Development Council discussions that are happening now, where we, as a Seattle region, haven't had to do much around true economic development recruitment, economic development recruitment, because a lot of people have come here because it's a great place to be, right? And you may remember when Boeing was talking about moving to South Carolina, we quickly said, wait, let's see what we can do around those things. And so, the dashboard was to look at some metrics that we could actually measure our efforts. And so there was a lot of discussion about what that would be, because, again, jobs is one thing, equity is another thing that we're looking at, looking at transportation improvements. So that conversation then actually created a foundation for what they're doing now at the Economic Development Council. They actually are recreating a regional organization that's going to be more like what other regions do, is to do more recruitment, and they're using some of the information we did on that, which we didn't come to a conclusion, because what happened was, there was multiple conversations happening in different places. But what it did do is help us to realize what our strengths are and what our kind of challenges are. And the conversation kind of grew from one county to three counties to four counties, and then back to one. So, it's a work in progress. I personally have stepped away from that conversation as the broader regional discussion is happening about whether we're merging multiple economic development organizations. I'm going into too much detail about that, but
No, it's okay.
But it's something that, at the end, in a year or two, we're going to have a stronger regional partner that we can work with. Right now, we have a partner that is trying to figure out its future, so.
So the word dashboards caught my attention. And so I'm not sure if the Economic Development Department has a dashboard, but
Nope.
Every once in a while, we get a presentation where we get to see the breakdown of jobs in town and where they are in terms of salaries and all the rest of it. So we can see whether or not new jobs being created are service jobs, or professional jobs, or where they are on the spectrum. Is that simple data to have economic development provide on a dashboard that actually, instead of we just finding it in a report once in a while, we could actually see it on our website?
Yes, the challenge is that it sometimes is so high level that it doesn't get to maybe the level detail you may want. So we could get that information from the state's Employment Security Department at certain sectors.
I guess I'm actually thinking high level, very basically.
Yeah.
Very basic, just in that we've had some projects in the central Issaquah, one in particular, where a retail mall was taken down and apartments came in. And so our city has, you know, it has X amount of retail and X amount of commercial, and as it redevelops, how do we track how much commercial and retail we have going forward so we don't end up with displacements instead of, so we grow the job pool and we grow it in the correct way? And I don't think I'm looking for real detailed data. I was just wondering if that's
Yeah, high level data. High level data, we can do that, yes.
Even if it was reported quarterly or put on the website quarterly, I think that would help.
And that's what I just wrote down, quarterly would probably give you a good enough change in that, so we can write that down, yeah.
So anyway, that's not what the county's doing now, King County Dashboard.
No, that's a broader conversation, yeah, about economic health, which is, yeah. So then, on the Issaquah side, just, I'll just take, you know a lot about the Transit Orient Development Project. One of the things I'll pull out of here is commercial brokers. So we do an annual brokers forum, and so that's an opportunity to have a two-way conversation. Although, as Keith mentioned, we have ongoing conversations out of the year, but it's a good time. We have the mayor and city leadership there, and for this time, we actually had Kurt Seaman from Transportation talk about the transportation projects, so they could actually ask questions specific about it, and they were enlightened that we are going to finish Southeast 62nd on time and, you know, all of the progress that's happening. So it's a good time to build those relationships. And so that's something that we continue to do and will continue to enhance. I don't know if you have any questions specifically about any of the other partnerships up here? Okay. Okay, I am now going to turn it over to our newly-minted chair. He was elected in May, I believe, or June?
Yes.
All right.
Good evening. Thank you for the time. My name's Ethan Stiles. I've been a resident of Issaquah since 1997, on and off, and I've been on the Economic Vitality Commission since about 2014, so about two and a half years or so. I'll just talk briefly about what we had done over the past year and what's coming up next, and then happy to take any questions you might have. So looking back at 2017, as many of us in the room were all focused on, we assisted with various items on the moratorium. Specifically, there was one on affordable housing, so some of our members sat in on the joint commission on that and participated in that, and then other various items as we were going along there. We also had, of the 10 members we have, there's a lot of newness on the commission. So when I joined, I think I was one of maybe, I may have been the only new person that year. And we had very experienced people that you may know, such as Bill Ramos and Maria Batiste, among others. So at this point, we had five new members, and we also had a change in both the chair and vice chair. So we had some folks stepping back and some folks stepping in. So a lot of it is just making sure we're bringing up those new residents and new participants, bringing them up to speed on what we've done in the history. A lot of good questions, but it takes time when you're trying to assimilate half of the folks that are new and may not have as much visibility to what's been done in the past. The other thing that we've just talked about recently is piloting student involvement. So we're actually going to have a senior from Issaquah High School participating, not as a voting member, but kind of as a pilot program to kind of, it was something that that group had reached out and been interested in. So we're going to, you know, in our efforts to get younger and represent all our residents, we'll be having someone sit in from now until the end of the school year, and we'll see how that goes. If it goes well, we're happy to continue it. So that was really 2017 for us. What's next? So as Jen had mentioned, we'll be looking at the strategic plan. Certainly, you know, you're addressing your question, Mary Lou, certainly if it, depending on the timing, we might pull that back, but that is something that we'd want to relook at and say, you know, even in a three-year time period, there's been a lot of change in Issaquah. So do we have the right plan and we need to continue to execute it, or are there some shifts we want to make? We'll talk about that. We've also done, as we've assimilated these new members, talked about, okay, economic development, economic vitality is a very broad term. Where do we actually want to focus as a commission? And so we used a few different criteria. One was, hey, let's make sure it's not overlapping with something that another commissioner board is already doing. Let's do something that's of added value. Second was, let's make sure that we are doing something where we can have impact. There are a lot of things that impact economic vitality. There are huge gnarly problems that the 10 of us, once a month, probably can't do a ton about. But we've taken, we've done some good work in partnership with the Economic Development Department. We've narrowed down to three or four tentative topics. We're going to have a meeting, a regular meeting tomorrow to settle on those, but I can share with you sort of the leaders in that. One would be business retention and expansion. Second would be really business recruitment. And again, of course, in partnership with the Chamber and other bodies that do this, but if we can provide more of a citizen perspective or bring the voice of the businesses forward, that's something we'd want to do. And then lastly, the work that Keith will talk about in, or sorry, not Keith, Tim will talk about on city branding, you know, that will need a little bit of a voice of the people and businesses in some way, so we want to be able to bring that forth as well and provide some participation in that. So that's our plan. And then obviously, as other issues come up that might impact business climate, that's sort of, I understand the genesis of this board was to, you know, speak a bit from the business perspective and make sure they're representative, but also, not solely businesses, also from the residents' perspective, what does a vital economic environment for Issaquah look like? So I think we've got a really good balanced membership that allows us to advocate for that. So with that, I'll take any questions you might have.
Questions?
Okay.
Yeah, this is very important.
Thanks. Well, good evening. My name's Tim Dutter. I'm the new Economic Development Manager. I started here on July 3rd, so I've got a few months under my belt, got my feet wet, but I am still learning. Before I start talking about business retention and expansion, I'd like to talk a little bit about the Port Grants and some of those projects that we are applying to do. We applied for the full $34,500 in funding, and we broke it down into five projects, what we wanted to use that funding for. The first being tourism, wayfinding, and branding, and I'll go into more of that when we get to the LTAC. The second is a partnership with the Chamber of Commerce for the Chamber University to host six business workshops, or a series of business workshops. And we've worked with Kathy to decide on what those topics should be, from the BRE visits that we've been doing and from the sector lunches that she's been doing. Every month, she has a sector meet for lunch and talk about common issues in the area. So with that being said, the workshop should focus on recruiting, retention, regulations, and revelations, which is somewhat of market shifts. The third project would be Mobile World Congress, which Jen might speak to in a little bit. That's a collaboration of the Eastside Cities, working to send a company, hopefully from Issaquah to Barcelona, to prepare to enter the global market. The fourth project would be website enhancement for the Economic Development webpage. We like the material that's there, we just don't think some of it's in the right place, so we're hoping we can work with our communications team to move some of that around. And the fifth project being something to do for, to support the sports medicine IPZ. And again, we're not sure what that's going to be. It could be a conference or an event, hopefully. So that's the Port Grant. Any questions about that?
Welcome. I don't think I've been at a meeting that you've been at before. Tim, I had a question. It seems like on a lot of the stuff, we partner with the Chamber, who represents a lot of businesses in town, but what percentage of the businesses do they represent?
You know, they have about 450 members, so less than probably 20%? Less?
Less than 20%? So how do we, how do you reach that other 80% with the work that you're doing?
Boots on the ground. So that's, I have, we're going to go into business retention and expansion visits. So we're doing them, we use a software called Executive Pulse, and there's different types of software, there's three or four of them. Synchronous was the one that I used in Wisconsin and Colorado Springs, allows us to catch this data. But right now, we're basically trying to go out and cover different sectors, so manufacturing companies, healthcare companies, retail companies, so that we're not just focusing on one sector. We can, down the road, eventually focus on certain sectors if we want to, but right now, I'm just trying to get out and understand the business community as fast as I can, basically. So this is just a sheet that I took a picture of, basically, and, you know, we're asking questions about their facility, if they own their space, if they lease it, if they're coming up on their lease, are they expanding, do they have room to expand? How's their workforce, are they having problems finding people, retaining people? And then we're collecting all of that data. And I'm just giving kind of a peek of what we can kind of look at when we do gather that data. I've gotten probably 30 BRE visits down so far, so we're out there doing them, but we can start to look at, do they have room to expand, or are they at capacity? So what is that data kind of telling us? How are their sales doing? These are companies that said they're growing between 1% and 9%. There's been a couple that have said it'll be higher than that, it's between 15% to 30%. So, once we know that they are growing, their sales are expanding, we want to keep an eye on them, check in, do you need more space, where are you going? So that's kind of some of the cool stuff we can do with the software, and that's why we have it. Business assistance, so while we're out talking to these companies and we're collecting that data, we're also trying to troubleshoot problems for anything that they might have an issue with, issue resolution, business assistance. I just threw a few examples up here. So Dairy Gold is a good example, where they were, we were having problems with their employees parking in the back, on the backside, taking up that space. So we went out and we met with them and said, can we brainstorm some solutions? He just added, I just spoke with him, he just added 10 more spaces in his northwest parking lot, and he's actually planning on using the parking lot across the street and putting some money into that. That's just an example of where we can go out and talk to them and say, how can we solve this issue together? Another example of that is working with our PWE department. John and I went out to all the businesses on 221st Street, one by one, and checked in to see how they were doing and kind of give them an update on what the city's doing with our projects. And then the same thing with Michael, with Sustainability, came to my office and we went out, and he had a list of companies they wanted to target to talk to about recycling and their garbage use and whatnot. So that's some of the things that we do do. Jen, can you mention some success with Evergreen Ford?
Yes, so Evergreen Ford is actually building, will be building a detail shop on First over in our industrial area, and there was some issues, lots of issues, with wetland and trails and sewer service, where the actual, there wasn't a sewer service plan for that area, and there's a whopping nine parcels that are not in sewer over in that area. So there, so it takes a little bit longer to kind of get something done when you don't have something in place. And so we were able, we as Economic Development, were able to work with our partners within the city and also with the Smamish Plateau water to find a solution that would work for them, that didn't cost $3 million just to connect a sewer. And so, these are the things, again, that if we weren't involved in these things, either it would take another two years, or it may not happen at all, so.
Thanks. And we do, and there's always little things that we're taking care of to help businesses out. We don't want to compile all of them, but if we don't, like Jen said, if we don't do them, if we're not out there having those conversations, we don't know if there's a problem if we don't know about it, right? So that's part of the BRE's visits. Companies are expanding, here's just a few examples. Gerg, just, yeah?
And it might be a, it might be a Jen question or a Keith question, I don't know. When I see 221st Street, Jen, there was some power issues on 221st Street for a development that was coming into town. And I had a question at Infrastructure a few weeks ago. When we negotiate those franchise agreements with utilities, do you guys get involved with that? In terms of making sure that you have the levers that you need to help residents out and businesses out when they get stuck in a bad situation with PWE, not PWE, Puget Sound Energy?
So, the pathway to PSC has been a challenging one. So they, right now, what we found is that they log their power outages, and so they can tell you how many days a certain business might have been out of power. What they don't log is their brownouts. And so, power quality is not something that they currently track. And so what we found, for example, is like at Swedish, when we went and talked to them, they said that their generators, their backup generators, were kicking on weekly. And it's not because power was going out weekly, it was because the quality of the power that was, that was being delivered to Swedish was not at a level that the equipment that they need felt like it could use. So, so what we try and do, we have actually two locations in town where we have room for substation, one substation expansion, the one across from the Sound Transit Center on SR 900. So that substation right now, which is kind of on the south side of Maple, there's room for that substation to grow by 100%, and they could do that anytime they felt like they needed the infrastructure capacity. There is also a substation location in the Highlands, basically north of Park Drive, along the BPA corridor, which was originally provided as a conversation between the city, Port Blakely, and Microsoft. Because of the power demands that Microsoft was expecting to use, there was a belief that a substation up there made sense. I think from a network kind of durability and capacity issue, both of those facilities probably want to be built to benefit our community. I don't know that there's any conversations going on between the city and PSC about doing that.
And I guess that was my question, if that was in your wheelhouse or not, just because the Chamber says it's the number one reason businesses don't want to come here, and that's why they support Energize Eastside. And I'm just not sure who in the city, if anybody in the city, partners on that momentum to try and get more reliable energy. The 221st Street issue more had to do with not being able to provide power to a business that was built. That's the dentist office on the other side of the street.
And actually, I was involved in that. And so, part of that was actually not so much about PSC, but about an easement that wasn't recorded. And, you know, so when you do things and a contractor sat on something for a few months, and so, again, it becomes an emergency then, right? A business wants to open, they can't, you know, plug in their drills. And, for dentists. Sorry. And so, yeah, so we actually, I was on the phone on the Eclipse Day, because actually as Eclipse was starting, with somebody from Public Storage trying to identify where that agreement was, so that PSC could then run that power. So it was a little different about reliability.
And my understanding is he ended up going to the PSC's ombudsman's office, and that's how it got resolved. But is there, is there, is there a lever that we have in terms of our franchise agreements that we have with these large utility companies that we're not pulling when they are harming businesses that are trying to open in town? That was why, that's sort of my, just my question.
No, our franchise agreements
No, our franchise agreements typically don't address like level of service. All they basically say is, if you want to go within our right of way, here's what you're going to have to do.
Okay.
But just, you might be remember, and maybe it was last year at this time, Andrea did presentations about the reliability and quality of power. So we have a good relationship as far as who to go talk to. Now, that doesn't mean that's going to immediately change that. But you're right. We had, we had multiple conversations trying to solve that problem. And it did get solved because of multiple conversations and the PSC and ombudsmen who I also was talking to, Denise, and our DSD was talking to, and the owner was talking to. So, but we, we will continue to have those, to have those relationships with PSC so that when there is an issue that we have, we know who to go to, to address that.
And just at a very, very high level, we have a hospital in town whose generator's kicking on once a week. And we're trying to attract high-tech businesses. But the, we have an energy issue out here. And so does that impact our ability to attract businesses when our grid reliability is not necessarily what it ought to be? And how big of a factor is that? And for all of the work that you're doing, is that like the elephant in the room that's making it harder? Because it's not on council's radar. This is, this is not on council's radar at all. Anyway.
Yeah, I'm not sure it's the first thing people mention, but, but it may be also that they may not recognize that there's, you know, as wide of an issue. And I think there was some work that, and I'm not, I'm not sure I'm going to quote this right, but there was some work to, to increase the redundancy of power here in Issaquah and within the last year or two. So that helps, again, reduce those brownouts. And I was actually surprised that this building yesterday was still in power with all the storms. So not that, you know, other areas were not. But, so yes, there's still work to be done. And that, as, as Tim's out there talking to businesses, that's, you know, the stuff that, that if we hear, we definitely start to address.
Okay. And just one more thing on the power. I've heard the concern that we're adding a lot of development in a very short period of time, such as apartment and multifamily uses. And is the grid ready to handle that? And how is PSC, how is PSC making it all work when these new big users come on? How is that affecting system reliability?
You know, I mean, I don't know if this is a topic that's of interest to the full council. And we can, we can have PSC give us information or have them come and talk about these things.
Tonight, I was just throwing it at Jen. How does it affect business, attracting new businesses?
Yeah. So I feel like this is a topic that we should probably think about, what is our long-term energy plan? Because I think there's a perception that anytime there's a significant windstorm, the power that's coming over the pass is at substantial risk. And so, and we have different grids that we handle different parts of the city. But I think that there's a perception that our power is more fragile. I hadn't heard this about the glitchiness of, of power to, to companies. But I mean, you know, this is any company that's got a big set of servers. You know, I work for a company that, that has big servers that do simulations for healthcare. And, you know, it's, it's got good power protection. But it seems like something that we want to think about as a city in terms of where are we at? I mean, with all the spare time that you guys are going to have after the moratorium's over.
Oh, yeah.
The idea of where we at. And like I said, there's just, every time there's a significant windstorm, you know, I go check the, my generator is, is, you know, good working condition.
So the value of the substation site up in the Highlands is it's a direct feed off of BPA? So how often does BPA go out?
I don't know what you just said. Those are all English language words. But you sung them together in ways that I don't understand. Sorry.
So the other thing I want to mention is that, you know, you hit the nail on the head about you made sure your generator was available and ready. One of the things I think for emergency preparedness, for all types of emergencies, that we can do a better job at is working with our businesses around, along those lines. And so one of these businesses up here, Dairy Gold, if their power goes out and they miss, you know, that their product needs to be thrown away, right? So, I mean, there's some pieces that, again, that, that businesses can do to prepare themselves as well, because they can't always rely on some natural disaster, a smaller significant thing happens. So that's something that I think is important to, to business continuously.
And I have one knit. It's 221st Place, not Street.
Oh, it is?
I went to look it up because--
You need to see where it was.
Yeah, I need to see where it was.
Good. Okay, so yes, this is--
There is no 221st Street in Issaquah. There isn't Smamish.
I was actually on the phone with Dairy Gold and Andy Swain this morning from PSC, connecting them. Speak of the devil. So back to expansions. Companies are expanding. GURK's down the road here, just added 2,000 square feet. Issaquah Premier Dental, she broke it on her own. Dr. Wu, 1,500 square feet. Booganhead didn't add necessarily square feet, but she went from tenant to owner. And it's a nice manufacturing company here, right on Front Street. Costco's the big one, 600,000 square feet. Please ask Keith any questions about that. And I just spoke, I just spoke with NAES this morning, and they've expanded up onto their third floor. They don't know how much square feet of office they're adding, but they're expanding as well. So that's always good news to hear about expansions. Tourism in the LTAC. So the LTAC, when I first arrived here, I kind of looked at this Roger Brooks study that was done in 2015. And basically, he, he gave an outline of 11 things to do, a plan for the city. So the LTAC basically has voted to follow that plan. But the two big ones that jump out are to create the Visit Issaquah organization as a destination marketing organization, as a DMO, and to hire an executive director to run that. Those are the two things that they're currently working on. And I've been working with Paul, Paul's the chair on this committee, to work on these items. So a lot's happening. They've got a lot of different things to look at. If you look at the history of the LTAC, what they've done in the past is they've kind of put that out there for a director or a contractor, basically, to come in and create events to promote tourism. And they didn't get a lot of response on it. I think if we go this route with the LTAC and create the Visit Issaquah organization and hire an executive director for tourism, I think we're going to get good responses. We're kind of excited about this program. So with the two that didn't go in the past, the money has kind of sat there. It's an annual revolving fund from the, from the lodging, from the hotels. The money has kind of pooled up. So they've got a good chunk of money to work with now. And they can start doing some destination marketing and start promoting tourism for Issaquah. So we have a lot of tourism assets here. I mean, you could rattle off a list. What kind of questions do you guys have about the LTAC? I'm sure you have some.
Andrew?
Sure. Just at a real quick glance, Chamber of Commerce used to do some of this stuff. So is there overlap between what we're trying to do and what they do or used to do?
Not necessarily. And we're, we're working with the Chamber on this to decide how this is kind of, kind of play out. They have the visitor center, but they're not really necessarily doing destination marketing. And they're not creating events. They're not doing the logistics between the events and the hotels and the restaurants. If you think of like a sporting, a kid's baseball tournament coming to town, that's the type of person that we want to coordinate all of that, to book the hotel rooms, get the discount, set the food places downtown where they want to eat, what they want to do, work with our Parks and Recreation to book those events. So this is what that person will do. It's a full-time job, and I think they're going to be pretty busy. But moving forward fast.
I'm not having a voice.
This, this sounds really great to finally see that the LTAC is being used and has a plan to be what we're, the outcome is going to be. I'm looking forward to following this.
We're excited. He has 11 point plans right here. Any other questions about the LTAC? Moving on. Dia, I'm, I sit on the board for the Downtown Issaquah Association. They're doing well. They financially recovered from kind of a hiccup that they had last year. They're, they're going to finish in the black this year, which is good. Not a lot of nonprofits can always handle that. We just went through two half-day retreats. So the board's really sitting down, looking at what do we want downtown to look like? What are we hoping for in 2018? Conducting, we just conducted the, that just went out, actually, this week. Conducting the merchant survey, we assisted in writing that to kind of figure out from the Downtown Association, do you want to see more events? Do you want more business development? Are the times off? What do you want to see more of? They're working with the Arts Commission on the Mule Project for the side of the building. So trying to get a more robust volunteer program, that's easy to blow over. But if you think about all the events that they do and all the work that they do, and I have attended some of them, they're fun, but they take a lot of work. They take a lot of volunteers. So for an organization like that to succeed, they need a robust volunteer program. They're doing, they're working on a welcome packet for new businesses, similar to what the Chamber does, just for downtown businesses, updating their website and their logo. And then they're talking about in 2018, adding, you know, different, trying to reach a different pool of people downtown, so daytime events maybe, and then incorporating diversity into some of their events. So like, for instance, their Wine Walk might be themed with different cultures coming into 2018.
Yeah. So let's talk about the hiccup. Last year, it had something to do with some funds that were available at the state level, but the city has to apply for them. And then it's a pass-through to Dia. So do we have that process figured out again? And also, I saw, I think I saw, that the amount of those funds was doubled. Okay. So do you know much about the hiccup?
Not about the hiccup. I wasn't here yet. But we do have a meeting scheduled between Jennifer Olson, Brenda, myself, and Bob to, to look at that in two weeks, to make sure that we're on the same page and ready to go for 2018. Yeah. Any questions about Dia? And I think my last slide is the Chamber, working with Kathy at the Chamber. So one of the things that we're kicking around is the idea of a CEO roundtable discussion. We're trying to figure out what that would look like, what kind of material we want to cover, what kind of guest speakers we might want to have. And then, you know, so that the CEOs from the companies in there can get something out of it. The Chamber University, the Port of Seattle, those courses, we're working with the Chamber on that. And again, they're involved in those discussions about the LTAC and the destination marketing organization. Hamilton represents the Chamber on that LTAC committee. And I know that Jen sits on their, is it their education committee, and works on workforce initiation, or initiatives, and collaboration, collaboration on information sharing. So anything usually that I hear that's going on that I think the Chamber is interested in, I'm picking up the phone and calling Kathy and vice versa. So we do have a really good relationship with the Chamber at this point.
I want to mention one thing about talking to CEOs. My understanding is most business relocations, at least when they're not, you know, changing states kind of a thing, really come down to where the CEO wants to go. It is--
Or spouse.
Is that?
Or his or her spouse.
Yeah, right. So one of the things I think would be interesting to ask CEOs is, you know, what can you do to get other CEOs interested in this area? I mean, they're going to say public schools, they're going to say, you know, you know, some of the things they're going to talk about. But some of the things will probably be a surprise. It'd be interesting to hear what those are. And then getting, you know, I would love us to see have, you know, some little version of what Chris Gregoire is doing, of getting major CEOs to engage with other CEOs, right? She's doing that at a statewide level. I would love to see us try to do more of that locally, to try to drive some of those big employers to, to come here instead of other places in the state.
Absolutely. Hopefully, as we're out doing the BRE visits and developing the relationships, we can start to lean on them to help us if they want to take a tour, if they want more information, or who they want at those, that table when they do come to, to look. I'd love to be able to call the CEOs that are like-minded industries and have them there. So absolutely.
Andrew?
Comment and a question. So the, I know that the Chamber is hoping to come to a future council meeting and go through their legislative agenda. So they've come up with a legislative agenda. That's probably not really a Tim thing necessarily, but somebody in Economic Development might want a preview of it. And then somehow, council should talk about how, where we align, which I don't think we've ever done before, which would be very cool. And then the second thing is kind of a much bigger up-in-the-air thing. And that is that, looking at growth management, and we've built a lot of our housing stock, almost as much housing stock as we need till 2030. We had a goals target of 20,000 jobs, I think, and we're at 2,000. And so we've got 10% of our jobs, 100% of our housing. So up until 2031, we have to find 18,000 jobs in town. How are we going to do it? Is that something that you guys work on? This is kind of the missing link. So it would be interesting, maybe in the Central Issaquah update that comes annually, to have Economic Development have a piece in there that talks about, I would flag that as, we're not getting there, and what's our plan to get there? Sort of, because it seems like we need to get a lot more jobs in town.
So, so the first big chunk of moving the needle is, so Costco building 600,000 square feet is going to allow them to not only continue to add employees, but also to consolidate some of their workforce, right? And so that's going to create space for another, you know, couple thousand employees across 56th from, you know, the Costco campus. So, so yeah, well, I think we can start to say what that looks like. I know that you asked for some of that information with the visions. I'm not sure we're going to be able to get that in time. But I know that that is definitely part of the puzzle that we need to better understand, because we've spent a lot of time at Land and Shore on housing. And I think you guys have a better understanding of those numbers and what that looks like and what it means for the rest of the city. I think you guys have very clear kind of understanding of that piece. We haven't really started that conversation on jobs.
And with 18,000 jobs to go, you have to add 1,000 a year for 18 years. So that's a ton of jobs. So 2,000 jobs, but by Costco's vacancies allowing for capacity, we need thousands more jobs in order to hit that target.
That's it?
Tim, I just want to mention, you mentioned Wisconsin, and I just happened to look up here. I didn't realize you're a University of Wisconsin grad, as a Minnesota grad. Next time--
I'll talk slower and use smaller words.
Nice.
Play you guys in football in a couple weeks. We'll see.
Wow.
Thank you.
Is that it? That is it from us?
All right. Any other questions, comments, concerns?
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Now the trash talking can continue, huh?